For Monday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five to order. First order of business is President Charles. We have a couple of things we need to add to the agenda. One is officially, even though it's on the agenda, posted not there when we posted it on Thursday, and that would be some police department purchase of a Ford two fifty cab pickup. Is there a motion to add that to the agenda, which is my paper copy already has it as item nine?
Some moved.
Any comments or questions? There are none. Let me try your mind. Select selectman Federici?
Aye.
And select woman Renner? Those in the room. All right. Sue, can you hear us? Sue, can you hear us?
Yeah, there's a little bit of a techno glitch over there. I sue.
All right. Well, Sue continues to work on that. Also, we had something that came in on Friday afternoon. It was correspondence, and it was a letter from Pat Todd who's here with us today. So I'd like to add that to the agenda under correspondence. Thirteen thirteen A. So is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Second. Let me try your mind. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner? Still having some challenges. Those in the room? Item motion carries. Item two, public forum. Anyone willing to address the board in public forum? Earring none. Let's move on to item three, approval of minutes. Three dot one would be the August fourth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I like the motion.
Nice second here. Any comments, questions, suggested changes, edits? I got none.
If you turn your volume all the way down on your.
We've got two of you, Sue.
Good to see you. I have three devices open, too.
She's got to shut one off.
No, it's yeah, I gotta shut one of them off, but time to check with your adult children. They can help us. That's how my stuff gets done. Okay. Nothing on the minutes? Let me try your mind. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Hey, here we go. Those in the room? Aye. That motion carries. Item four, finance director, Mary Jane Mowesey. Four dot one, received with a report from the finance director. MJ, good morning, and what do you got for us?
Good morning. So I'm reporting today on somewhat final, but unaudited figures from June thirty. Next month, we'll have all of the transfers and and items such as that to make it look a little bit better. But as far as revenue, we'll start there. We did bring in more budgeted, more than our budgeted revenue for the end of June thirty, twenty twenty-five, two hundred, almost two hundred and five thousand, which is made up mostly by fire department. So that they did a really good job on their revenue, and we'll talk about that later on. Not sure if you have any other comments or questions on revenues. That's pretty much where we're going to end the year on the revenue side. Very little probably.
Any anyone with questions on revenues? Just thanks for noting the fire department, which is at what, one hundred and fifty-eight percent?
Yeah, they brought in five hundred and seventy-five thousand more than budgeted, which is helpful on the other side.
Fiscal year twenty-six budget to reflect those kind of things. We're not going to have that luxury. Good job. Obviously, there's that's medical calls, right? So numbers are way up.
And it's reflective on the expenditure side. They're over budget on the expenditure side, also due to calls. As I've, they're here, but as I report each each month, when we have an increase of calls that bring in more revenue, we end up with an increase of expenses just to cover the supplies on the trucks, potential placement for crews that are called in. We've had some extraordinary building expenses. Again, the fire department is here. If you have any any questions there. So that does lead me to on the expenditure side. Again, as I've reported on the last couple of months, we have a number of transfers that will come in from our committed funds. So as you see, a three hundred thousand dollar deficit in our budget right now on the expenditure side, that not that will not be how we end the year. Specifically, we have a number of items coming in through capital from fund balance, IT. We will need to cover the couple of overages in departments such as the fire department and golf course, which is also here. We can discuss that as well. But so in the end, when we come next month, what I typically give you is this report with the anticipated transfers, so you can see where that ends up and the transfers to make for the end of the year. As I've said many times this year, we will not have the surplus at the end of the year that we have generally had the past few years. So we, I anticipate we will have enough to keep our fund balance percentage where we want it to be. But the potential of moving money into some committed funds is probably not going to be here this year.
Well, you do anticipate well enough to cover the additional amount.
Correct. That's what I just said. Yeah. So yeah, we'll have enough to keep the percentage where we want it. Yes. And possibly a little more, but not enough to justify, I think, any transfers.
Okay. Yeah. Sue?
I have a question. It's a mechanical question about that. The part of the amount that will drop to fund balance is from Board of Ed. On the on the revenue side, we did not get one of the educational grants that we were expecting. So it's hurting us on the revenue side, but there's benefit on the expense side. So I guess the Board of Ed is is contemplating that provision that's allowed under state law where they can keep a certain percentage of their budget or of their excess for the future. I don't know. I read that in the Board of Finance meetings. I don't know how familiar you are with that, Mary Jane. But let's say that they were to do that, then that would affect the amount that drops to the fund balance to be able to let us keep our percentage. Is that is that correct? That would be a kind of a mismatch.
Yeah. So you're reading that as correct. The Board of Education is now entitled, no longer required for Board of Selectmen or legislative body approval for them to keep the excess or unexpired unexpended funds. And that is by as a right. And I do know there has been discussion both at Board of Finance as well as the Board of Education that they're intending to take advantage of that to the degree which they're going to do that. I've not heard. As I think we're all aware, there are some challenges potentially with federal grants and funding. It's not just the direct funding on federal grants, which we receive so little of. It is the funding that comes through the Department of Education, Connecticut Department of Education. So there is, I'm sure, consideration on their part that they would want to retain some funding for that. But you're absolutely right. Had they determined that they do not want to reserve those funds for future use, it would fall it would fall the fund balance.
Yeah. So my final numbers, Sue, I do already bring the Board of Education down to zero in the numbers that I'm working on for the transfers next month. But I will note on the Board of Education revenue line, you're seeing the shortage of forty-four thousand. Is that what you're looking at?
I've posed that out. Let me go back.
Okay. So it probably. That's not necessarily a shortfall in the revenue received. That's a shortfall in the budget figure we put forward. If you know, we always budget the state, the state funds far earlier than we really have final numbers. So it's a budgetary difference, not necessarily an amount we didn't receive, unlike the other departmental number, the four hundred thousand dollars that, as I've been reporting, was an item that we budgeted for, we had anticipated receiving, and then we were told we weren't. So I wouldn't want to take away the money from the Board of Ed for that reason because it was not any intention there.
No, no, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Just a couple of quick points here. The the Fire Department revenues, I have to commend the Fire Department on that because you virtually eliminated the over expenditure in terms of personnel. So this is, I think, the first time that that number has come pretty close to the eight five ninety-one versus five seventy-five. So that and I know I've had some conversations with the chief. He's said to me on more than one occasion, budgeting is his biggest focus right now is to contain the budget to the degree as possible that they can not exceed the budget as in the past. And also, we're going to talk about a little bit later, same situation on the golf course. We got an over expenditure for a capital project. But the revenues exceeded the expense deficiency was overbridge. So sixty-nine versus sixty-four. So we'll be talking about that one in a couple of minutes. Okay. Any other questions on either expenditures or revenues? I dare say we probably won't be talking about warrants. That's tonight's meeting. Medical?
So on the medical side, we're at this point, I'm projecting for this year a thirty-two thousand dollar deficit, which isn't so bad. But that doesn't include a couple of items. The Board of Ed very nicely overpaid their revenue in July, and I guess they, if you remember on the board, on the medical side this year, we have taken into account the use of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fund balance. And so the Board of Ed had not adjusted their number for that. So you'll see that correction in September. They're going, they'll be fixing that. So I took that out. And we do still have some stop loss receivables of over three hundred thousand dollars from last year. So that that helps us as well. You'll see we also received about three hundred thousand dollars this year already in in stop loss claims. I'd just like to report on the stop loss side that after much deliberation between our consultant Linda Monroe, Linda, sorry, Noah Linda Monroe, Linda Trudeau, and myself, we did raise the limit for the ICL to one hundred and seventy-five thousand. So that that so that was it. We were able to reduce our premium by about seventeen percent because of that decision. So it does increase our exposure by twenty-five thousand dollars because we're going from one fifty to one seventy-five. But we're hoping that the difference in the coverage will help us there. And
Thank you for highlighting the change. The ISL, it's a something, it's a conversation that traditionally happens at every budget cycle.
It does.
And we wind up saying we need to start looking at this earlier in the cycle. So you guys have made the joint commission committee between the Board of Education and our consultant to take that decision. The news is that will give us a little bit of experience between now and when we have to set the budget again in February to see. That move is beneficial or detrimental.
Right. It is. It is a discussion we have every year. This is just the first year that we felt that it took the scale in our favor. So we chose to 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 give that a go.
All right. Anything else?
Yeah, I have a quick question. MJ, really just a question. You mentioned that we used fund balance in this accounting of our medical expenses. That's the dedicated medical fund balance, right? You're not talking about general fund balance.
No, that's from the fund balance within the medical account itself.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Anything else? Okay. Item four dot two, consider take possible action to transfer funds from reserve for personnel into various departmental line items fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
So as you know, when we budget each year for salaries, any contracts that are not finalized by the time we do our budget, set money aside in reserve for personnel for that for that purpose. So our GA contract has been is done. We have an extension to the Fire Department contract, and we have some other minor changes in personnel. So I have a list on page two that totals three hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars coming from reserve for personnel into the various line items. You'll see that we budgeted seven hundred and fifty-six thousand. So we're using about half so far. So this is for items in the current budget.
And there is indicated there is there'd still be funds in there because we have other contracts that are currently being negotiated.
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the transfers?
Some moved.
Second.
Second.
Comments or questions? Earring none. Let me try your mind. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item four dot three, consider take possible action to transfer funds from committed fund balance revaluation, revaluation to the revaluation fund for October one, twenty twenty-six. Okay?
So your last Board of Selectmen meeting, you awarded the contract for revale. We do have the funds in our committed fund balance for this purpose. And I believe that Donnie will be working with Becky to get a purchase order out for that as soon as all the Ts are crossed and and Isadada. But so I'm looking to transfer two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars from the committed fund balance into the revaluation fund. That represents two hundred and seventy-two thousand, which is the award for the contract, plus a thousand dollars of incidentals. We have the expenses for the bidding and such that have come out of the the revale fund. So I'm looking for a transfer of two hundred and seventy-three thousand from fund bound balance committed revale into the revaluation fund transfers in.
Great. Is there a motion? Comments or questions?
I just a quick question. So the two seventy-three, is that exactly what we had? Or is there is it less? Are we spending less than you held or?
We have less, but I'm anticipating two revales in advance. So so we're looking to cover because we had to do one in four years and then we have to do another one. So we take that amount and and so we're already anticipating covering the next one. So the difference that we have in there, I don't know, might be twenty-five, between twenty-five to fifty thousand somewhere. We're going to need for the next step. But there is more than enough money to cover this particular one.
Justice aside, the the next one will be scheduled to be twenty twenty-nine, so we'll go on three years out. This was the legislature in their infinite wisdom to try to get regions of the state on the same revale schedule for some for some reason. So there are a couple of other municipalities. And Becky came to me last Thursday or Friday, I think it was Thursday, and asked if I would join in a letter to OPM to extend for another year because it's just a burden that would be free of them within seven years.
I know they want to get them all on the same schedule within the COGS. But it's to the detriment of very few municipalities. Unfortunately, Gilbert is one.
All right. We have a motion table. Those of you who are selected, Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. All right. Four dot three dot one, discussion of golf course, department budget, Ted, Ty, and Steve Ferry. You guys want to come up to the table?
All right. Just a little bit of background. MJ, you can fill in the missing parts for me. The golf course budget is overdrawn, particularly on as a result of a capital project, which is, I think, rebuilding the seventh tee, if I'm not mistaken. And the funds were taken from the operating because they were not either insufficient or we had disidentified as a capital project. So we're turning this into a learning moment for everyone as well. So Mary Jane.
Yeah, exactly. So at one of our Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen meetings, I know, last month or the month before, the issue was discussed, and you had asked to have the Golf Commission come to a Board of Selectmen meeting. So that's why they are here. There was, they can talk more about it, but there was the seventh tee that was done last September, I believe, for about twenty-one thousand dollars that came out of the operating without an increase in in the budget. So that's why we're kind of here today. And I'll let the golf course take it from there.
I just like to point out one thing that in twenty twenty-four, we got an approval by the board for fifteen thousand dollars and change towards the towards that project. And then we we didn't go through the capital process at that time. We just got approval by the board for that monies. So we, I interpret that we can spend that money immediately, which we did, without a capital budget line item. And I didn't know that was necessary to go through that process. But I know it's necessary to spend more than that money at any one time. So so learning.
And then
I learned.
And they do have more projects in their capital budget now. We have similar projects that are in their capital budget at this point.
Ted, any the costs exceed what we had anticipated?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, there's, I basically have like seven different line items where we were over budget in our last fiscal year, which is shows on our paper. But the big one was the new tee. And then being it was so dry last fall, we did some spend some extra money on liquid fertilizers because we didn't have any rain August, September, and October of last year, if everyone remembers. So instead of putting down a grander product or one of the more expensive liquid product, I've gone for. So that's why some of that's increased. But I don't know if you want to go through every line item.
Well, I guess I'm just curious. So the ground maintenance line is overdrawn by forty-three thousand. Half of that is the tee. What represents the balance?
Yeah, I think it's just an increase in pricing and having to use different product than what was, as Ted just stated, was necessary, given the environmental conditions.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I guess I just have one question. I mean, so all of this is going to factor in to your next budget presentation? Yes? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think he's saying this this experience will inform you as to your next budget presentation related to capital project.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. I understand that. That's great. Thanks, guys.
I think it needs to be said, Steve Berry is chairman of the commission volunteer position. I think there are a couple of other commission members here. And as most of us understand, this this town runs largely on volunteerism. So if there was a process that a civilian volunteer was unaware of, maybe we need to do a little better job from an organizational standpoint to to talk to our chairs or talk to our commissions, board of commissions about process. Now, that being said, Ted's been through a couple of these budget cycles over time. So Ted, I think, has now been reminded of the process that needs to take place. But I, one thing I do not want is to have any any in disdain or any on the volunteers who do this work day in and day out to support the residents of our community. So my thanks to you, the volunteers who participated. And as I said earlier, learning moment, and I think we need to move forward.
Always willing to come to commission meetings.
That's true. Thank you.
Yeah, in the past.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Not sure I even want to go here. Making any progress on the the tees and greens? Is that is that starting to manifest itself in recovery?
Well, it's in it's in the process of starting. Last year, last week's heat wave kind of didn't didn't help. Basically. Yeah, we have a plan set. Stick to our plan.
It's in motion already. The plan is in motion. It's just it's going to take some it's going to take a little more time for it to recover.
I should know this. When is the next commission meeting, Golf Commission meeting?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow?
Yeah.
Tomorrow evening?
Tomorrow at six o'clock at the clubhouse.
All right. See if I can join you for that, only because I've already received correspondence from at least one resident.
Yeah.
Who is suggesting that we evaluate refunds for folks who are seasoned, seasoned pass. So I think that's a discussion we probably have to have.
And I think there's going to be a group from the men's league and perhaps the women's league come to talk to us as well.
Wear your flag jackets.
I'll just make one final note. If you look at the current fiscal year for July, green fees are already at twenty-three percent after the very first month of the year. So we're on track for for another year.
Yeah. And as I said at the outset, your your revenue exceeded a target by sixty-nine thousand dollars, which covered the shortfall on the expense side. But we prefer that fault in the fund balance. But
Understood. Thank you. Thank you.
The people coming to the commission meeting, they're unhappy because the condition of the course is not up to what they expect, but it's because of weather-related issues.
Not only not only weather-related, there was an error made in the application of a new type of fertilizer.
Okay.
At least that's what I understand.
I think you've answered the question. We're on track for another good season. But you did bring up the fact that we operating expenses were up last year. And does it look like prices and everything are another wave of increase or are they leveled? Are we going to be faced with that, too?
They're pretty much low.
We're on track for another year is to be, all things considered.
Through July, at least.
Better to start that way than have to start.
I had to end with a positive note.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all. All right. Item five, public works.
Come on up. This is not.
No. Dominic, I'm the shop foreman. I am here asking for approval for our new forklift. Our forklift now twenty-two years old. It's starting to see better days. I have gotten several quotes for the forklifts. We were budgeted for thirty thousand in the capital. I was able to find one and come in at twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight and thirteen cents.
Well done.
And it is under state contract for us. So and we, it is, they have it in stock. It's from Tri-State. So I was hoping that that one.
Great.
It's actually thirty-four, thirty-five.
Yeah, but it's not of a five thousand dollar trade-in.
Right.
Yes. And for our, now they're giving us five thousand dollars as trade-in.
So that keeps under thirty thousand.
Yes. With the other, I mean, I have the other quotes here. Some of them, thirty-two thousand. They even go up to forty thousand.
Including the trade.
Including the trade. And all the other places only offered us a thousand dollars. I was able to get these guys to give us five thousand.
And that and that means that meets your needs. It's 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 robust enough for everything you need to do?
Yes. Yes. Actually, this one is going to be even a little bit better because it has a pneumatic tire. So we can actually go into dirt with it. Unlike our machine now, it's more of like a warehouse machine. So this one actually is going to do us even better.
Instead of yours.
Yes, most definitely.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
I moved.
Who called second? Any further comments or questions?
No.
Good. All right. Let me try your mind. Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room? Dominic, come back anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item six. All right, item six, fire department. Another one of those volunteers. Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
We've got three items, I guess. Six dot one, discuss to take possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the town of Guilford to enter into a memorandum of agreement. With the state of Connecticut, the E S P, Department of Homeland Security.
Thank you. So this M O A M O U with the town allows the town to participate in the regional grants program for homeland security grants. And the town, the benefits of the town is we are custodial owners of the equipment, which means that we care, we get the. We can have the equipment here in Guilford, so like light towers, stuff like that, hazardous materials, response equipment. We house all that and we're eligible to use Homeland Security Grant Program to purchase them and keep here in Guilford. So that agreement is with thirty towns of region two and the regional emergency planning team that if something happens anywhere within the region. That we're willing to, you know, not only house it, but we can share the resources with everybody.
By the way, Mike, I know you're on the regional task force.
Congratulations on your new position. Thank you for taking the lead.
My pleasure. My good friend Mike Frieda. All right, any questions? Let's let motion first. Is there a motion? Hearing none, let me try your minds. Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Select woman Renner.
Aye.
In the room? That motion carries. Six dot two, discuss to take action to approve the disposal of fire truck department vehicle.
So we have two older vehicles brought this to the commission at the last commission meeting. A nineteen fifty, I want to say fifty six utility vehicle was used as our high water truck. It's definitely an end of service life and not, it's it's done a great job. We're at a point where it's not worth putting any additional funding into it, so it's looking to that that vehicle. And then a nineteen ninety five Ford F three fifty rack body. A utility truck, which is one of the old chassis from the ambulances as they go through the remount truck, remount process. It's our oldest chassis and it's end of service life.
This one is seventy years old.
Yeah, nineteen fifties Korean Korean air military truck.
They don't make them like that anymore.
Didn't we sell one once to a collector or something?
It may, I mean, it may have auction value.
You remember well.
Here's the picture if anybody wants to see it.
Yeah, we used it in Superstorm Sandy and then also during the snow. The lizard Nemo as well to get around. It was useful. Definitely end of service.
All right, is there, what's the methodology for disposal?
We work with Dave Castro and they put it out for auction and it goes through that auction process.
Is there a motion to approve? Further comments or questions? All right, hearing none, let me try your minds. Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Select woman Renner.
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye, that motion carries. All right, let's move on to six dot three, discuss to take possible action to approve an equipment purchase for a fire department.
So this is, this is actually for communications, but fire department communications, I brought Jay along with me as well. This is in for capital budget for UPS replacements. So Jay, I don't know if you want to discuss or talk about any of the UPS stuff for how that works with the system for fire, police and communications.
Yeah, it's essentially just replacing everything at all three sites, which is town hall, police department and fire department. And it's all updated UPSs, so.
What 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 acronym, what does that stand for?
Battery backups essentially. Yeah, under power.
That's impressive.
She's hard to I T.
All right, this is pretty simple. The other, my assumptions, the other stuff is end of life.
Uh, yeah, and the service life and, you know, the the big thing too is the smarter UPSs notify you when it switches, you know, remote, you know. Notifications are all part of this stuff and the the stuff is end of life, so.
And Jay, if I'm not mistaken, UPS covers us from the time that power goes down to the time that generator power kicks off.
Yeah, it's essentially protecting the equipment and we're just moving from, but we're moving to a better model. Because the generators, as time goes on, kind of like the power can be bad sometimes. And that protects all the equipment from it.
What's the usable runtime with the with these once power goes down?
Oh, the stuff we're putting in down there is probably like if the generator failed, we saw probably like an hour and a half per building. For our servers, it's not for the whole building, but it's just for communication stuff.
All right, any any other questions? All right, is there a motion to approve? And a second. And a second, thank you. Further questions? Try your minds. Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Select woman Renner. Those in the room? That motion carries. All right, item seven, I think I see on the screen Cliff. School facilities, discuss to take action to approve a change order for the Baldwin Middle School Gym Project. Morning.
Good morning. So this change order actually consists of three items, so it's actually change order one, two and three. For the Baldwin Project, the first item for the change order was. The new floor is going to be slightly lower than the old floor. So we have to readjust the six basketball hoops down to the actual proper height. So a simple fix, but it's better having them do it than us because it's not an easy adjustment. So that's change order one. Change order two was after we tore up the floor. We found a trough going from one side of the cord to the other side. I would speculate this was originally put in there to allow wires or electrical to be. Brought from one side of the court to the other side of the court for various reasons. So what we did was we put in two pieces of one inch or three inch conduit. And then they backfilled the trough so that the floor would sit on that and wouldn't have any issues with it being played on. So that was number two. And then thirdly, after we tore up the floor and did the whole abatement project. We always test the slab to ensure we don't have a moisture problem before we put down a floor. Regardless whether it's a gym floor or carpet or classroom floor. Unfortunately, similar to most of our locations, we did come across a high. Moisture content in the slab, so we had to install a water barrier underneath the gym floor. So that we would not have future problems with moisture. Those are the three items that we have for change orders. We're asking to have those approved to Target Sports in the amount of fifteen thousand and thirteen dollars.
Thank you, Cliff. First up, is there a motion to approve? In a second. Comments or questions? Cliff, the usual question, could how could we have anticipated the potential for this? Were there any discussions of thoughts, you know, the trough, there's probably nobody here was around when that that floor was laid. At least not in the rolls that they're currently in, so. And 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 any any contemplation of these issues ahead of time?
Uh, we we did talk about it with the standing in building committee to see if there's anything we could have done. Really, there wasn't much we could do about it. We didn't have a as-built that showed any trough on it. So we didn't foresee that. And again. You you can't just tear up the floor or do demo work because the asbestos work underneath. So that prevented us from A, testing for the moisture content and B, doing any kind of. Pre-demolition to further investigate what was there. So we kind of had our hands tied with the asbestos.
Uh, yeah, Charles just asked a question, what about the anticipating the height differential?
Again, we didn't realize that until we we had to tear out, there's an extra layer of asbestos flooring underneath the gym floor. That's how we end up reducing the height of the floor. There was a corked layer underneath that that had to come out. That was asbestos, so.
Overall, what was the contingency on this project?
The overall amount, it would have been ten percent of the project, so I can't recall off the top of my head, but this falls well within that range. Yeah.
All this comes out of the contingency.
Yeah, yeah, you're okay with that.
Nothing else coming out of the contingency.
Any, were there anything, anything else that came out of the contingency, Cliff?
Not at this point, no.
No, this is it.
Correct.
One thing to have a change order, another thing to have a.
All right, any further questions?
Yeah, just the the smallest of those, I suspect, is the height of the basketball. Those backboards don't have some tight adjustment. Even a small amount. I mean, I just sort of can picture they give you a little tool and move the thing up and down.
Uh, there's there's certain ones, those do not have them. They're all preset. We do have certain hoops that are adjustable. Most of those are at the elementary schools to allow for various age. Kids that play for Park and Rec to play, but the middle school, those are bolted in place, especially the primary two. For the primary court.
Okay.
Yep.
Probably cheaper to adjust the hoops than it is to raise the floor.
I'm also trying not to make the observation that the Boston Garden for years, I think, had dead spots, probably troughs and wet courts for years. To sort of throw everybody off, but I guess we want to be a little better than the Celtics.
Yeah, but we, our our kids knew where that that spot was. All right, let me try your minds. Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Select woman Renner. Uh, those in the room? That motion carries. Cliff, thank you.
Thank you.
Right to me, engineering, in this place, yeah. Eight dot one, MS four compliance, what are your favorite subjects?
Yeah, so, yeah, this year we're trying to continue with our MS four compliance utilizing. Weston and Sampson, who we've been using for the past five years, although last year we didn't actually do any testing. We kind of missed it with the level of work we had in the office and then. Kind of worked out well because we didn't do any wet weather testing last year. There was no rain, so we're just continuing on with a hundred. Dry weather testing or inspection sites and then also the six compliance wet weather testing sites. That's and they're holding their price from the previous purchase order at thirteen thousand.
All right, is there a motion to approve contract with Weston Sampson to do the alcohol testing? For MS four compliance?
I move.
And a second.
Second.
Second, Sue as well, okay. Comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds. All in favor? Leave that to discuss to take possible action on appointment of recycling coordinator.
Yes, I'm happy to say that I will not be the recycling coordinator anymore and Adam Hirschman, who's. Been transitioned from the administrative assistant for engineering over to an engineering tech with the new contract and budget. One of his responsibilities is to take over as recycling coordinator. That'll be registered with the state and on our website as well as the state's website. And what that basically means is you're the contact for the public if they have questions about what's, how to recycle things or what can be recycled. So that'll be helpful to me to not get those phone calls anymore.
Will he do any responsibility for any of the personnel down there, those who are in that area over there that still stay with you?
Yeah, now he doesn't have any management authority. He's just kind of the contact person, but he's going to be working with me with the co-collection group. That we're working with and he's always done the reporting for the transfer stations for recycling. And so this kind of add a little more responsibility to some of the things he's been doing and some of the things he's going to work on with me with the co-collection. Task forces.
Great, and as you mentioned, with the G A, the job description will be adjusted. All right.
What are you gonna do with all your spare time?
Start to manage projects that are going on in the front. All right, is there a motion to approve the appointment of Adam as the recycle coordinator?
Second.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Hearing none, Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Select woman Renner. We're taking that as a yes. Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, for what it's worth, I just got booted off with some sort of data limit. Note, it might, I thought it might have been on this end, but I don't know if the same thing happened to Sue.
Well, we still got Christie Ruben, Dennis, Jennifer Ash and Becky.
Okay, yeah, I I I suspect it was on this end, but I had to switch over to my phone.
Ah, gotcha. Okay, item nine, police chief, and. Senator Fasulo.
That was last week, Jay Leatherman here, so. It pleases the court.
All right, is there a motion to add a second item under police department that would be for the replacement of a server? Is there a motion? Uh, let me try your minds. Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Uh, select one Renner who's got bounced off. Those in the room? All right, we'll make that nine point two, so. Uh, first up. Discuss to take action to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty five F two fifty X L T hook up.
Present the truck purchase. Sure, so this is the final of our annual kind of reevaluation of our vehicles. Specialty vehicle, twenty years old, approximately twenty years old. We use this for a variety of different functions, mainly, most usage is probably transporting traffic. Signage and equipment out to accident scenes or only lose power at major intersections, et cetera. But we use it for a variety of other events and incidents. It is showing its age for sure. Uh, we have used it for some of the hurricanes and major storms and I think as a result, the undercarriage. Kind of had significant wear and tear. If Dominic from Park and Rec, or I'm sorry, from D P W was still here, he'd be able to to kind of shed more insight into that. But it is certainly due for replacement. We worked with Jengris, who we purchased most of our vehicles from. They have a sick contract for the Ford F two fifties. We are looking to purchase it with the aluminum lift gate. Our current one is equipped with a steel lift gate. Which has been invaluable for us, I think, for loading heavy equipment into the back of that truck. This one's aluminum, doesn't have quite the capacity as far as weight, but I think it's more than sufficient for what we need.
All right, is there a motion? And this was identified in the capital, capital budget approved at referendum recently. Any other questions? And what are you gonna do with the overall?
Uh, we're evaluating whether we trade that in or put it for auction.
Thought that would be the answer. Okay, any further questions? Let me try your minds. Selectmen Federici.
Aye.
Select woman Renner.
Aye.
Welcome back.
My back? Good, thank you. Sorry, so sorry.
No, don't apologize. Those in the room? That motion carries. Uh, all right, nine dot two, replacement of Dell server.
All right. As you may remember, we replaced our backup server at the P D a couple of years ago as a capital project. This is a very similar project. We have the two servers. This is our, for our primary server. Jay Leatherman, who's here as our public safety I T coordinator, worked with our vendor, Dell Technologies. Who we've worked with in the past for our servers. They have the state contract for the server, meaning the specifications that. Jay worked on specifically with them. So this is a understate contract price of sixteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty two cents. We're hoping to get that approved today so that we can move forward and potentially get this done before storm season really takes off for us, which it's already. Doing so, so.
So yeah, somewhere south of us right now. Let's keep it, let's hope it stays that way. All right, is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Second. Comments or questions? End of life, replaces.
Yes.
Let's do it before we have a problem with it. It's identified the cap- uh capital uh.
Still a little underhopes budget for capital.
Well done. Uh, all right, questions, uh others, comments? Hearing none, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Uh, Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jay. Item, appointments and resignations, uh ten dot one, uh discuss to take possible action, real point, Matthew Rader to the Economic Development Commission, is there a motion?
I would like to make that motion.
Second, uh any comments or questions? Hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, item eleven, uh request for the use of that town property, eleven dot one, discuss to take possible action on request. The Guilford Art League places a sign on the green for its seventy-seventh annual exhibit September eighth to the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, is there a motion? Yes or no, okay, we got, we got everybody on this one. Um, any comments or questions? Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Uh, eleven dot two, discuss to take possible action on a request from Saint John's Church to place a sign on the green for its craft fair being held on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Sign placement, October fourth through the eighth and twenty twenty-five, is there a?
Aye, I'll make the motion.
In a second. Uh, any comments or questions? Uh, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Uh, Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye, that motion carries. Uh. Well, eleven dot three, discuss to take possible action to approve a signed request for Christ Episcopal Church advertising its tag sale, is there a motion?
Sell moved.
In a second. Uh, comments or questions? Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Uh, Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye, that motion carries. Eleven dot four, discuss to take possible action on a request for use of the green from the Guilford Arts Center. Uh, is there a motion? So, and the second, okay, let me, uh is there any comments or questions?
This is, this is next year we're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we continue to have no negative, no issues, no problems? No negative feedback from the community about having the event on the green?
On the Arts Center, uh I get occasional, I get occasionally some of the merchants aren't happy about it because it's their perception that. That deters folks from coming downtown uh to do their, to do shopping. Uh, uh others uh have uh have exercised some creativity and uh tried to capitalize on the fact that there are a lot of people here, so. Next, uh I, I did have a conversation uh in Big Y, as I was checking out yesterday with someone whose name. Will remain anonymous for now, but is uh active in the agricultural society and they of course want everybody to go to their facility to do it. Um, I did remind him that the green was originally designed as a communal space. Uh, for people to gather, uh so there's, there's that fine line uh between uh, you know, overuse and inconvenience. Uh, because in the day when it was originally contemplated as communal space, people were bringing wagons with oxen or horses down here to do it. So, probably not quite as uh crowded. And I, I'm also old enough to remember uh. The, the, the last year, the, the, the Guilford Fair was held on the green. I believe I was in eighth grade and um, you know, and then, and then it moved to the fairgrounds.
True.
But, good questions.
Uh, all right, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Uh, Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room? Aye, that motion carries. Committee reports? Anything stand or?
Nope.
All right, um. Uh, well, we've got Christie here, uh Christie, anything from the Affordable Housing Commission uh that you might want to share? Uh, you're, we can't hear you. Still can't hear you. Now, can't hear you. All right, well, why don't you keep trying, uh we'll, we'll, we'll move on to uh correspondence. Uh, item thirteen correspondence, thirteen dot A, this is the item that we added to the agenda pack, come on up to the pit. Uh, I, I think it's in board pack or onboard rather, um so. Pat, for the uh folks who may not have, have, have seen it, um just wanna, wanna recap what your, uh, what your, like us to contemplate.
Uh, the marina. The marina is shabby, uh but that's my own personal opinion as well as the opinion of. Those of us in the Leets Island Garden Club who have flowers and plants down there. And the Guilford Rotary has also expressed an interest in pursuing making it less shabby and by shabby, I mean. Twelve parking. Blocks for boat owners. I don't know when the last time they were painted, but they're, they're very ugly. And the uh two islands in the middle of the uh marina closest to the water are full of weeds. Uh, that we can't get out. They actually would need a machine like you have up front this morning. Yeah, it's frag mighty, so, very difficult. So, um, and also the uh box planters that have Rosa Regosa in them. Either need, uh, they need soil for one thing and the roses are, only one rose is in. Any kind of good condition. Uh, so flowers don't make it. And we also, uh for Leets Island Garden Club, we've been putting flowers down there for many, many years and we water them. Weekly, I have a team that does that and the uh. Marina Commission does reimburse us for the cost of the plants. Uh, the rest, everything else is volunteers. So, I'm only bringing this up to your attention, I don't know anything about budgeting for the marina, I don't know anything about the Marina Commission. But um it's shabby and the Jake's Beach has just exploded with beauty lately. And um Whitfield Road Avenue was repaved and it stopped at the marina. So, I'm sure it's all a question of your budget, et cetera, but I'm just telling you it's shabby and a lot of people go to marina.
Oh, I do.
All day.
Absolutely.
I'm down there working, it's an endless stream of people walking or cars coming in, looking at the beautiful view. So.
Had any conversations with anyone from the Marina Commission itself about it?
Yes.
Okay, and their response?
Negative.
Pat and I both serve on the Rotary Board, so this was a fairly robust discussion at, at our last meeting. And I'm very happy you came with the letter today and.
Oh, good.
Support, because I was gonna bring it up on the new business, but Pat has more details about it, who does what. And um, yeah, I can't speak for the entire Rotary Club, but we do raise money. Have some funds that we're looking to put to a good end and the board seemed. We didn't take a vote on it, but everybody in the room and we. Um, felt this could be a worthy, not that we could fund everything through Rotary, but that we could. Contribute to making things look better there in some way. So, you know, but with some town support as well.
Is the Marina Commission responsible for the parking lot? I can appreciate the docks and fencing, that kind of stuff. Is the Marina Commission responsible for the parking lot?
We have given Marina Commission some responsibility for determining who can park where, et cetera, but it is still a town property. Um, but also to that effect, the uh marina itself is still a town property, so.
I just think, and I'd like to play, I can appreciate the, the painting and maintenance and that kind of stuff, that. Probably fairly clearly is their purview, but. Islands in the parking lot, I would.
Now, we can, uh, let, let me check with Pete and talk, I, I, I want to understand the relationship between the commission and its purview with managing that property. Uh, and does it act, does that include the parking lot as well, uh because typically parking lots are under the offices of the. Uh, Board of, uh, Board of Select, so, but clearly, um, I'd be happy to make uh Public Works crews available.
Excellent.
To, to, to dig out those, uh, those islands, uh, I don't know. A little further up Whitfield Street at this, the split between Old Whitfield and Whitfield, that little island, that little, that, that little island that was on the right hand side. That was uh, uh Public Works there, Public Works took out all the, all the old stuff. Um, and then when the paving was done, uh they recreated the, the, the curving around that, the triangle, I think it's.
Oh, right.
And, uh, they've recently planted uh a variety of plants down there, uh, all of which are pollinators, uh. Uh, alleged to be pollinators, I don't, I couldn't tell a pollinator from a non-pollinator, but, um, but I'd be happy to make them available, so. Uh, we might want to put together, uh, just a, a small ad hoc, maybe to talk about what the overall plan would be, uh, uh, assuming you folks. Uh, with Rotary, Marina, Marina Commission and the.
Leets Island.
Leets Island Garden Club, representatives from each one to sit and try to come up with some kind of a plan.
Right, I think Rotary would, would be, well, I think that's a great idea, I think Leets Island Garden Club and the Marina Commission with the town input. Rotary could react, I mean, you know what I mean? I'm sure somebody might want to sit on it, but, but more, we would like to try to fund it once we know what it, what it is.
Right.
And for fun part of it.
Right, well, you know, I volunteered to be the Rotary.
Yes.
The A F on, and I've been uh chairman of the marina for Leets Island Garden Club for at least fifteen years. And it just gets uglier. The plants are beautiful.
Thank you for bringing it to our time.
Can I ask a question, was the Marina Commission negative to the funding of this project or did they have some other reasons for not being in favor of?
I just brought up the uh, um, the idea of repainting the boat owners. Do you know what I'm talking about? The blocks that stop your car from going in the sun and I didn't really uh express any interest at all in it.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, it's like, didn't seem to focus on it.
Resonate, does it resonate with them?
No, didn't get his attention.
They weren't opposed to it, they just didn't.
No, no interest.
Okay.
It was no interest to.
Okay, I was just wondering if there was some boating reason, not being a boater, I, you know, is there some boat reason, but doesn't sound like it.
I have, I have a suspicion it's probably budget related, uh.
Right.
As uh I think we know, we, although we made some significant impact by last year or so, but. Uh, the cost to them to continue to do the dredging is uh, has put them in a financial situation, but uh. Thanks to Senator Cohen and also a couple of uh FEMA grants that we got, not FEMA, but uh congressionally directed spending. Uh, their coffers should be a little fuller, so.
And it's a related topic that came at the Rotary meeting, one of the people said, you know, we had a lot of um. Excitement about the Red Shack a year ago and it cost a fair amount of money to save it, move it, preserve it. And somebody said that, again, many people go down to the marina, many, many people, some from town, some from out of town. And someone suggested a little plaque somewhere saying what it is.
Right.
I had, I had a extended conversation with Pete Webster, one of your Rotary members. And uh, so he is gonna formalize uh that request. I suggested he talk to Joel Keelander uh to help prepare some wording, you know, uh, that, that could go on a sign.
Yeah, I know.
So, because you're right, there are a lot of people who show up down, come down here are not vocal and they don't know what it's saying, what it is, don't know the history of it.
And why the pictures of it all over town.
The most photographed uh spot in Guilford.
You know, I, I like to emphasize the out of, uh, people who don't even live around here, the marina and. So many, I was down there this morning at seven thirty, there's just this endless procession of people walking down Whitfield to the marina.
It is, it is the most traveled, the pedestrian, uh, area.
And that's the destination.
And it's that down and back.
Right, so, no longer shabby, that's what I'm.
That's a good goal. Shabby chic.
We want chic chic.
Cheeky, right. Pat, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Painting dirt, sometimes in high school. We have pretty straightforward.
I gotta paint. Thank you.
You're welcome.
More coordination and leadership.
Got it, okay, uh, item uh thirteen dot one, Public Works report, anything? Uh, item thirteen dot two correspondence uh from a resident regarding the elderly tax relief uh program. Uh, I think that we probably would be uh best off scheduling or moving this to an agenda item.
Just gonna, or, or going into executive.
Executive session. Yeah, um, we don't have, well, we could go into executive session today if we wanted to, is that?
I think we should.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to add executive session uh after public forum?
Some.
Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici.
Aye.
Uh, Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. All right, so I'll be, uh, we'll go into executive session on that, um. Uh, thirteen dot three, uh correspondence from Gilbert Peace Alliance uh regarding green use. Um, this may be uh, uh apparent, self apparent why I've included this, there have been some discussions about the, our need to. Um, either weigh in or be aware of, formally aware of some activities that take place on the green. I have, uh, this is just an informational piece, uh, this document is shared with the police department. Um, for traffic considerations, it's a regarding a gathering on the green on Labor Day. Uh, call to community to defend democracy, so this is uh. In my estimation and also uh our town attorney's estimation, this is considered uh free speech, uh right to assemble uh for free speech. And uh it is uh, it is not my intent for us to determine what is uh free speech or not free speech, but. And which type of free speech we want, uh, so we have not, um, we have not officially approved these, but this is just a heads up that it's coming. Uh, and I approve and appreciate the organizers for continuing to uh give us uh, uh. Warning, a forethought uh before the event so that uh we can, we can work with police department, so, just a FYI.
And it's, it's limited to one hour.
Yeah.
Here, so, not taking over the green of the day.
That's right.
Right, right, and from what I can tell from the past couple of events, the green is spotless afterward, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Right.
Like it never happened, so.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I thought at first that you put it in the wrong place on the agenda and then when I thought about it, I came to the same conclusion that you did.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, old business. New business? All right, um, public forum, anyone wishing to address a board in public forum? Christie, you're, you're there, you're back? Still, still can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Wow, that's impressive.
Turn off one, uh, one of your, the, the device that you couldn't, but there you go.
There I am, okay, how, how's that?
There's all, there's only one of you now.
Okay, so I just wanted um to, to uh sit in because I was thinking, oh, I'll learn something when they talk about finance. And uh I'm glad I did because I can now uh give you an update on the Affordable Housing. Um, a commission's uh effort to raise money for um our video.
Excellent.
We have uh received, uh, we've, we've received uh awards of. Um, about half of our video cost, which uh, well, I'll start with. We've learned that we have, as a new commission, that we need to get three quotes from. Uh, from uh vendors for any expenditures and we've done that, um. The quotes range from uh sixty-five hundred dollars to over fifteen thousand dollars. And our kind of target, we hope will be in the middle at around uh, uh twenty. Uh, twelve thousand five hundred, um, and we have raised so far from two. Uh, applications for grants, um, sixty, uh, nine hundred dollars, six, sixty, something like uh that. So, uh forty-nine and fifteen, that's, uh, sorry, sixty-four hundred dollars. So, we have one other grant um that we're applying for and once we have that. Uh, we hope we will be close to uh raising the money we need to do the video. Um, we're beginning uh to interview this week, um, the three videographers who've provided quotes. And, uh, we'll figure out a timeline, uh, uh, once we make that selection. Um, or in the process of making that selection, so we're hoping to be on track to finish the video, uh, by the end of the year. Um, in the meantime, we will have to, um, pay the videographer ha, uh, by their quotes, it looks like we have to pay about half upfront and then half upon complet, the, the second half on completion. And, uh, the turnaround time looks like it could be two or three weeks from all of the videographers, so, um, uh, it would be short notice to come before and give you reports at your, uh, usual meetings, but we will try our best to keep you updated on that.
Great, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, um, nothing else, is there a motion going to executive session? Becky, would you stay or come upstairs?
She's right here.
Right there, on cue. Is there a motion going to executive session? Uh, and a second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Uh, Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Uh, those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
Sound moved.
Let me try your minds, Selectman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries, during executive session, there are no motions made, no actions were taken. Uh, but, uh, we will be, uh, working on revising any previous policy on the issue we were talking about, uh. So, uh, is there anyone, uh, anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, uh, let me, uh, entertain a motion.
Sound moved.
And a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you all. Safe, safe trip. Safe trip.